Okay, I think it's close enough. Good morning. Glad you're all here this morning. It's nine o'clock, July 14th, 2014. I now call the Potter County Commissioners' Court to order. We'll start this morning with a prayer from Commissioner Bonne. May the Lord bless us.
Gracious Father, we just thank you for this day, this day of bringing our Lord in the beautiful remainder, glad it for us that all of us were present and pleased to receive. And we desire your guidance, direction for all as we proceed through these proceedings. As court, our minds, Father, to be on one and one accord as we discern the issues that are most important to the purposes of this county and its citizens. And we ask that you give us guidance, direction, and we ask for blessings upon all those who are our special, first responders as they continue to stand the house, to give us and our protection, all of the military personnel, both in foreign, through the security, concerning the families that has continued to support, guiding all of us, Father, and all the ones that are present, all the citizens of this county, while they're there, keep us direct and secure. Your name, pray.
Your name, pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas Black, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, our first item of business this morning is the approval of minutes. We approved the minutes for the June 23rd, 2014 regular meeting and July 8th, 2014 special meeting of the Potter County Commissioners' Court.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? We then will proceed to vote. All in favor, signify your rating again. Motion passes four to zero. Vouchers are next item of business to consider and act upon the approval of. The payment of vouchers processed by the county auditor's office for the period of June 18th, 2014 through July 8th, 2014. And those are checks 1-5-6-4-4-9 through 1-5-6-7-7-2 and wire number 3-98 through 4-0-2 for a total expense of $2,92,130.23. Seconded, but discussion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the vouchers. Is there discussion?
One item out there, if you go on page one of court two, item 1-5-6-4-5-1, category of vendor AISD, the May 14th agency for compulsory listing an item of around 700, number 700, table 1 and 2, for an amount of $180.23, table 1 at $1,570.23, but table 2. Can you just give me some amount of what you had or what specifically you're thinking this was?
There are certain compulsory school dependence charges, half of the bond, the judge assesses, assesses goes to the district, and this is for the month of May, that's half of the bond that goes to the district.
So this for table 2 was 1,570.4-96, half of that was there at state charge, this was the portion that had to be.
This is the portion that's on.
And the other half?
Goes into the general code.
And that constitutes what as far as where does that go? That state would have been on the county, does that go to the state or the?
No, it's reflected in the five categories for Jack to the general code.
Carrie, a follow-up question to that. Have you seen unusual increases this year? That dollar amount is certainly a bit higher than I would have expected.
Yes, it is because we're looking at how you see the question.
Do we know a reason for that?
For assistance.
I'm sorry?
The end of the school year.
I'm talking in general terms, not just in terms of staging of the timeline of when these dollar amounts in the full year, the full calendar year.
There are just more funds being assessed that judge wants to answer that.
And this is most specifically an area of truancy.
Thank you.
I don't have a specific question, I've already had those answered, but just for my information, what would qualify as a restricted expense?
Those are items that can afford your funds or something that could potentially be an officer risk that is related to a vulnerable case.
Appreciate it. Any further discussion? Seeing now we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the vouchers as presented, if you can signify your rating again. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Next item, item number three is budget amendments. To consider and act upon the approval of budget amendments for the current fiscal year. Would you like to say anything?
Carrie, I do have a couple of questions, starting with item number four, and really several of those on page two, four, five, and six. The way it's indicated, requested by auditor for excessive purchases, specifically on four and five. Can you help me understand that?
We had expenditures come through on private cars that were used to point its own budget, so we did not see it ahead of time.
Is there a process in place for that to, I guess, not occur and thus be minimized? I think the departments would be keeping track of their own budgets.
Yes, we would like that to happen, but any expenses that we got, we didn't allow them to.
What's that?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah. On item five, was that a worse finisher on travel or?
That was one of the worst.
So does any responsibility lie with the departments if they go over budget, other than, I miss that?
I'm not sure. They did not have discussed the budget policy and we need to make some changes to that to.
Yeah, no, there's nothing specifically that calls out the process that happens if they do go over the budget. You know, it reserves the right for the purchase agent to cancel or suspend that party time for any reason. So I mean, I think that could be something that could be as a temporary stop, yeah, but there's nothing that talks about a process if they do go over the budget. I guess it's the first time it's happened since I've been here, so that may be why it was never addressed, because it was a common issue.
And one of those funds being specifically pulled from the contingency fund, there certainly isn't concern around just lax in spending is what it appears, you know, when we see this for excessive spending. Okay, any revisions to the policy or if you need court assistance with that, certainly advocate for that.
Okay.
All the questions I have for the court.
We have a motion to approve the budget amendments.
I approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the budget amendments as presented. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now we'll vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Three, okay. All those against? Three to one. Motion passes three to one. It's a little difficult, we only have four of us here, because we could have ties. Till next time. We also need to pay our bills. I hope he realizes. He's got two and a half months to go. Okay, our next item, number four, is a quarterly budget comparison to recognize the third quarter general fund comparison report for fiscal year FY13 and FY14.
Again, this is just a report for your review. Overall, we're, what do you know, now that it's usually, you know, there's this actually off.
Nothing on the honor that stands out before the end, I don't think anything that you put our finger on this board.
No, other than the items that were on the budget minutes, there's just a couple of.
I have a couple of questions, if I may, and Carrie, this, I think, follows up to one of the questions on the voucher, page two, so it's the back of that first cover sheet, the fines, where you have it listed, the JP one through four. I'm looking specifically at JP two, and roughly we were at 72% this time last year. So I think what's important to note about this report, when we see it quarterly, it really gives us a good pulse on where we were last year compared to this year. So I see that at roughly 72%, and already with the timeline, I see that at 128%. Did I confirm I was reading that correctly? And typically, increased in revenue is a good thing for the county. That's obviously mixed opinions about the truancy and revenue assessment for that. I have another question, Carrie, page eight. And 251st District Court, general operating expenses, I see that at 13% expense this time last year and already at 70%. Is there anything unusual going on in that court?
It's got to skew that a little bit, just the timing of their bond capital purchases.
Then one more question, page nine, similar for the district attorney. Saw that at 50% general operating, it's at the bottom of page nine, this time last year, currently six at 68%. Is it at 68%? Okay.
This report has go through three quarters of our busy year, so I feel good if they're below 75%. So anyway, my question has to do with revenue, and maybe I just don't understand how to read this, but a court-appointed attorney fee recoveries.
What page, Commissioner?
It's under, then, revenues on page three. Bottom line is 300,000, and we have zero recoveries. Is that typical? No recovery, no recoveries on those?
I should put some subclaims in here for you, because we only budgeted under one line, I would retract it by four. So if you take all the, there are probably eight, seven or eight lines above that 300,000, those are the actual recoveries. So I will put some subclaims in there.
We spend a lot of money every two weeks on court-appointed charges. Okay, anything else on the quarterly budget comparison? During then, we will duly record that we accepted that report. Number five, insurance report to recognize the insurance fund report. Ms. Holling, do you have anything special to add to that?
No, there's nothing remarkable on the insurance type report for this.
If it showed that we did recognize the insurance fund report, unless there's some questions. Number six, item number six, Potter County Group Insurance Plan to Consider and Act Upon the Recommendation of the Insurance Advisory Committee to Renew Contracts With Current Group Insurance Carriers For the 2014-2015 Planning Year to Include the Follow: A, TAC, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas Care Mark for Health and Drugs Coverage; B, MetLife for Dental and Basic Supplemental Life Coverage; and C, VSP for Vision Coverage.
You should have a handout in your pack that indicates that the Insurance Advisory Committee did meet on July 2nd and review our group insurance plan and options of the various components for this upcoming year. As you'll see in the handout, that advisory committee is recommending, and they did vote unanimously of those present, to continue with TAC, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for this year, along with Care Mark for Prescription Coverage. You'll see a descriptive on that handout, our health insurance and prescription claims have continued to hold, which was, if you will remember, the basis of going with TAC, Blue Cross Blue Shield initially. And we've had one full year, and are about a partial year for this year. Those claims have continued to hold, they've managed to keep the claims cost down to within reasonable range of those expected claims projections for each of those years. Additionally, we do have a rate guarantee in place for all the administrative costs with TAC, Blue Cross Blue Shield for another year. So those fixed costs for the administrative fees will be set for this year with no change. Again, TAC, Blue Cross Blue Shield basis, there are renewal rates for reinsurance and the aggregate reinsurance based on the full TAC book of business. So we're spreading our rates across a pool of 34,000 lives. So it enables us to pull in much better rates, because our individual large claimants don't have such a profound impact on our particular renewal. So that's the rationale and the reasoning behind the TAC, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Care Mark prescription recommendation. The dental coverage and basic and supplemental life coverage is currently offered as a bundle through MetLife. They're, all of those coverages are fully funded. Both the basic and voluntary life rates are guaranteed with MetLife for this upcoming year. We're still involved in our rate guarantee there, this is, this will be the third year of that rate guarantee. The rate guarantee also includes the dependent voluntary rates for the life insurance as well. The dental rates are not guaranteed for this year, and unfortunately, we do expect an increase, but because the dental plan allows for a much greater maximum annual benefit for employees and their dependents, and that benefit is being currently utilized well by Potter County employees and their dependents, it is also our recommendation to remain with MetLife for the life and dependent coverages as well. The final coverage is the vision plan for VSP. VSP is also a fully funded plan, and we have a four-year rate guarantee in place, and this is the third year of that rate guarantee, so we can continue to get with now increases for this upcoming year. Therefore, the Insurance Advisory Committee voted unanimously of those present to continue the coverage with those carriers for one year, as is allowed by the contract.
Any questions?
Hey, I do have a question specifically on the medical Blue Cross Blue Shield. If I remember correctly, when we transitioned from the existing medical carrier and really under the TAC umbrella, part of what we were expecting was also some cost-saving measures, specifically around, I think, the case management that they offered, that we could really tap into with the expectation that that would reduce claims down the road, or visits, if you will. Have we seen that in fruition at all?
TAC, Blue Cross Blue Shield does a very good job with containing those claims in the very way that they process claims and manage claims through case management and their entire process. The renewals back in 2012, when we made the decision to move to Blue Cross Blue Shield and TAC, the projected claims figures were well in excess of $500,000 difference for a year in claims from the current carrier that we had at that time and what the claims projections were with TAC, Blue Cross Blue Shield, because of the way that they approach claims processing and all of the manner that they use to contain those costs. And our claims have held within those claims expectations.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking for the advisory committee, and I wasn't given authority to do this, but I think this is a good way to go for at least this next year, to continue with the same plans that we have. And that was how we voted, basically, that day. With that in mind, I would, I make a mo, I, excuse me, I need to state the problem. I moved, moved that we accept the Insurance Advisory Committee's renewal contracts, recommendations that we renew the insurance contracts with the current carriers for the 2014-2015 planning year. It's been moved and seconded that we stay with the plans that we have for our medical, drug, dental, basic and supplemental life, and vision coverage. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify your rating again. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you for your work.
Thanks, Carrie. Item number seven, fire and rescue training. Consider and act upon one, or A, approve a contract with the city of Amarillo to leave meeting rooms at the Amarillo Center Complex for the National Honor Guard Academy Training and Graduation, and basic rent to be paid by the Commission and Visitors Council; B, to approve an agreement with the courtyard at Amarillo Downtown to offer a block of rooms at a special rate for participants. Welcome. Anything you'd like to add? Alex?
Pretty much we put it all into the packet that we've given you. This is a great opportunity for, not only for the county and our fire department, but it's going to fit lots of other departments and everything around the area. It's going to bring a little bit of revenue to the city. When we attended this, the class that was in Austin, there are people from Florida, California, Wyoming, all of the United States have came to attend this class. So those people are going to come here, they're going to get great training, and they're going to be here in our city.
Applause, certainly our fire department, they made tremendous strides on the limited resources of the firefighters, and the proactivity is there, it's just amazing to see these guys, what they do, they love what they do, they're fond fans of brands that they put on, they're teaming as a team with the patch, they were out late last night, pushing the wing, covering semi, that's been along with the fire that they've done and teams throughout this year. So my hat's off to them, and for them to go and out to move forward towards the Honor Guard is certainly a great body county, and state of counties throughout the state. So my applause for them, and I certainly enthuse of having them doing what they're doing towards this.
I'm Chris.
I have a couple of questions if we can, and I would certainly echo a similar sentiment.
Wait. Yeah, we need a second. We have a motion on the floor to approve these.
A second.
Items. Okay. And you meant both A and B?
Yes.
Approved both. Okay. And your second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, and a second. We will now open that for discussion. Go ahead.
So can you help me kind of give a lay of the land of what the conference will look like? And so how is, I would certainly echo all the similar sentiments, and really goes without saying, how the county is positioning to encourage participants to attend this, how long the conference is, that type of thing?
Oh, how long is it? It's a week long, and it starts on a Sunday afternoon, and it ends on a Friday evening. And until we get everything approved, that can really promote it to, once, once everything is approved, you know everything's going to go through, then there's a, there's an online website for the company, and they'll post stuff on there, and I'll also be sending out multiple emails to every department in the area. And by attending that class, I also got contacts with other departments down around that area across the state, and I'll also send them emails saying, we're going to have this here in our hometown, you know, and send some of your people up here.
And do we know how many we're expecting to come to the local area?
We're hoping at least 30 to 40 participants, though the class is big enough for up to 50.
And part of what I saw in the write-up is the fees that you're anticipating for it are within your existing budget?
Yes, ma'am.
So if, if that will be taken from your existing budget, what, what was planned for that budget for those dollar amounts that will now kind of be removed, if you will?
It's, we'll take it out of our education and travel, and to us, that's, it's much more education on it. We looked at this, and the cost of providing the rooms and transportation are not a lot more than what it costs to send two people off to, to this for travel for a week, especially if we have to go. The only place they're offering, the other place they were offering at the time we started this was in Connecticut, and.
That's part of, that's part of the assimilation of making effective travel. Because when now be here, it's going to.
Sure, absolutely. Okay.
That way we can send that four to, four to five, maybe six people to it, much more economically.
Sure.
And I'm sure the sheriff's office will send some off, quite possibly send some off, so we haven't really talked to everybody until we've got it going.
And then I also saw, as really kind of a good win, that the Amarillo Convention and Visitors Council has obtained the space really at no cost.
Well, what they've done is they've paid our rent for the civic center for those rooms that we, for that week, they've gone ahead and approved to pay for the cost of the rooms.
So just to confirm on the lease agreement, what I was expecting to see without kind of knowing that statement is, the lease agreement that we essentially have a motion on the table to approve still shows 7,300 as an expense, and the county, I guess, is committing and signing to that potentially, but that bill has already been paid?
Yeah, right underneath, there's right underneath there in the contract, it states.
Can you tell me what section or what page am I on?
I'm trying.
Okay, just for your.
Yes, ma'am.
Any considerations?
On the very first page, whole print, kind of about where you're going.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just want to echo what Alfonso just said, and I did feel privileged to attend the funeral of Andy Butt, your colleague and one of our volunteer firemen. And it's real impressive to see our Honor Guard firemen dressed in their dress clothes, and it was a cool thing, so I did, and it's a wonderful service for, for him, so thank you, ma'am. Okay, any further? Okay, any further discussion?
Oh, questions I have for the floor.
Any, seeing no other discussion, we'll proceed to vote to approve the contract with the city of Amarillo Police Meeting Rooms at the Amarillo Civic Center Complex for Potential Honor Guard and the Training and Graduation, rent to be paid by the Commission and Visitors Council, and to approve an agreement with Courtyard Amarillo Downtown to offer a book of rooms at a special rate for participants. All those in favor, signify the reason you need. All those opposed, sign. Passes four to zero. Tax Office Sale of Property. Consider an act upon a request from the tax assessor collector to sell a piece of property in a private sale. The property is located at 24715 Plumb Thicket. Is that it?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The property was sold private sale, didn't sell at Sheriff's Sale, but gentleman came in a few days later and wanted a purchase, and is it okay?
Anything unusual about the property or location, any of you there?
No, they bought the double one at the Sheriff's Sale, and because of the listing, he wanted to make sure he got the house, and so the property was listed first. He's already got a purchase report for his sale.
I make a motion that we approve the sale of a piece of property in a private sale, address 24715 Plumb Thicket.
Okay, just a second. The movement second that we approve the sale of a piece of property in private sale located at 2417 Plumb Thicket. Any further discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Close sign, passes four to zero.
Thank you, thank you.
Item number nine, Amarillo Convention and Visitors Council. To hear a report from the Vice President of Amarillo Convention and Visitors Council. First, I'd like to introduce the President of the Amarillo Chamber of Commerce, Gary Mulberry. And Gary's going to introduce.
Thank you very much, first, Judge Ware, Commissioner's, thank you for having us today. Well, it's lovely to tell your story, but I've been president of the chamber for about 17 years, and a lot of people understand what the Amarillo Chamber of Commerce does, but not all chambers have a convention visitors council under them. That's happened in Amarillo, I guess, going on. Been there for my 17 years, probably about 30 years, if not longer. And they have a specific purpose outside of the chamber. They're fully funded by the hot tax, hotel tax money. It's not the chamber funds, and so they have a separate agenda, and they report to our mayor and city commissions, who really oversee the sort of budget. And part of what we do, I think, reflected in your report today, you saw the convention that we have, we've worked with this folks at the fire department to secure this convention for Amarillo. This is not only important for Amarillo, we look at hot tax money, for these folks coming to town, and they spend money, and our sales tax bills up. I think it's going pretty sound even to hear this report, Mr. Quan, of what all we cover and what all we do in Amarillo. A lot of people don't look at Amarillo, and that's probably true, that's a destination point. We consider it a pass-through point. We're glad we have I-40. We love to see snowstorms, because it locks down I-40 down in Oakdale, it really is. But there's a lot of reasons to come to Amarillo, and part of the, though, I might say, Mr. Quan's been here, posted in on two years, and I'm happy with that, he's been here. He was in South Padre. I question anybody who's south Padre, Amarillo, to come to work, but he made that decision, and he absolutely, like all of us, has fallen in love with Amarillo and doing a phenomenal job. He has a small presentation today. My dad, he talks a lot, now like me, so shut him off if you've got a full agenda, but I think you will enjoy his presentation today, and show exactly what the Amarillo Convention Visitors Council does for our city. And so at this time being, want.
I'm not sure what kind of endorsement that was. Actually, the kind of interesting thing about the different couple, I know there's an obvious difference between Amarillo and South Padre, the beach is a little better than South Padre, but when I, one of my first meetings I had with the city council, I pointed out, and I don't have the figures exactly right now, but in the last year of comparable data, which I think back then was about 2011, of tourist, it spent, direct spending, not multipliers, not all those, it directly spent well over $500 million in that one year in South Padre. And South Padre is known as a tourist destination, and that same year, it was over $750 million in Amarillo. So we, we definitely are in the tourist industry, and it's a big part of what we do. I know you, you as the county don't directly receive a hotel occupancy tax, with one part of the exception is that the event venue district that you're involved with, in terms of all the, I think, a little bit of the civic center there, also has a hotel occupancy tax. So if we're doing a good job bringing people in, that means there's more money in that pot. If we're not succeeding as well, there is as much money in the pot, so we're all getting this team together, plus the fact that a little over 90% of all the hotel rooms in Amarillo are in Potter County. There's only about four or five hotels that are in Randall County, that are part of the Amarillo districts. Anyway, that's, that's kind of an important deal. What I wanted to talk to you about is kind of what we do. We all understand gravitational pull, that's what's keeping me here right now, and I'm holding down more than most people, because I've got a lot of weight with me, but that whole concept of, you know, it just keeps us where we're at. The concept of running a convention bureau is to take and change people's, the gravitational pull for tourists, that they're used to going to Albuquerque to ski, or, you know, or Santa Fe or toss. Well, how do we alter that gravitational pull so while they're driving through, they stop here for a while? Or they're used to going to the Grand Canyon, or like to go to the Grand Canyon, but they can't quite get there, and so now we bring them to Paul Verro. How do we alter that? That's kind of the, you know, the idea. Now, part of the challenge with this, like this one says, not all gravitational pull results in magnetism. You know, this, this can be kind of a challenge, but we're like a meteor, you know, when you study astronomy, when the meteor or an asteroid gets in the way of a celestial body, it can actually alter gravity, alter its course. That's what our job is, is to alter courses. So, of course, we have to be appealing, which I won't get with mine, so the concept is, how do we do this? How do we draw people to Potter County, to Randall County, to the Amarillo area, even to Texas in a larger sense? Well, part of this, if this makes sense, these are traditional attractions. You've got activities at the Tri-State Fairgrounds, you've got Paul Verro, you've got the Big Texan, probably one of those famous things we've got in our area, it's known worldwide. Those are traditional attractions. But you think about the fact, our mayor likes to talk about the fact that over 60% of all the sales tags collected in Amarillo is from people outside of this area. Now, I'd declare this thanks to all of our work, but it's really, you know, when you think about it, all the people in the Panhandle, your constituents are coming here because we are regional shopping center, we're a regional medical center, so they are coming here to purchase things that they can't get in their area. So honest attractions are water burgers. I once heard the mayor of Canyon say, if he ever gets a water burger, he will retire, because that's what he thinks that whole town needs, if they ever get a water burger, they'll be sick. How many times do you go to a community, and one of the things I'm hearing, yeah, you might want to see a museum, you might want to go to a play, you might want to go to something like that, but you really want to go to Macy's? Or you really want to go to Texas Roadhouse, like you don't have one in Dahl Park, or something like that? That, and we have to be honest about that and understand, one of my attractions, and I was looking at South Padre, and I drive to San Antonio or Austin, was the Arby's in Kingsville. I never drove by there, like, because I didn't have one nearby. I love Arby's, so that was a tourist attraction for me. So part of our job is to, is to not just work with everyone, what everyone thinks of as traditional attractions, but what's appealing to people? What is brilliant here, and it may be, the Arby's is down on Western, so we'll see, but I can't be that, because that's in Randall County, so we'll come up with something else. Anyway. So how do we do this? We're funded by the hotel occupancy tax, the hot tax that you're talking about. Group sales, this is part of, you just recently talked about some of the funding issues involved with the downtown project. The need for a convention center hotel is critical for this community. We have hotels that have some meeting space, but in terms of our industry, we have no convention center hotel, we have no true convention hotel in terms of the kind of meeting space, and the tie-in with the civic center is, is, is just plus-plus, win-win for this area. We've got three people, and that's what they did, they're just out there group sales, including assisting with the event that you were just talking about a couple of minutes ago. Group service, again, assisting with the event you were just talking about, but making sure when they're here, they're taken care of, they're having a good time, because if you've got good salespeople, you can sell them, anybody something wants them. You can't sell them again if they didn't enjoy it, if they didn't have a good time, if they didn't, we weren't there to thank them. One of the best examples of that, to be honest with you, was just last week. Last week, we hosted the West Texas All-Star Transpitch softball, women's softball, like what, eight to 18 girls softball. Their opening ceremony could have been up to 5,000 people, which includes the 1,000, a little over 1,000 participants. We were having it in the civic center. Civic center got a little damp, and it had no power, and so we had to move it, and how many places are there in town to move 5,000 people, essentially 5,000? We put them in the Amarillo mansion center, and it worked out wonderfully, but that's example, they will remember that service, they'll remember people trying to help them out, they'll remember goofy little quadcopter we have that flies like a little remote control helicopter, but it takes, we've got a camera on the bottom, and it takes pictures for us, so we can help promote their events, so they'll remember that, too. Advertising, we do a lot of advertising throughout the area, some general advertising, some very specific advertising, just saying what we are, why we're here, and why you should be coming here. We're very involved, I'll mention it, second niche marketing. PR, just telling people, again, here's what's going on, this is why you should be involved. American Idol, this Thursday, if you want to remember how to avoid a traffic mess, avoid the medical center area and the Discovery Center, the Medical Garden on Thursday, it's going to be a madhouse, probably a couple thousand people on it, all going to get on American Idol. That's something our office has been working on for a number of months, so it's kind of fun. The visitor center, I know a couple of you had a chance to talk with our visitor information center metrics, we're adjusting that. It's in a bad spot where it is, we're quite honest about that, I mean, you have to use a visitor center to find our visitor center, it's kind of hidden away on the west side of the civic center, but with the changes with the convention center hotel, the changes in the civic center, we're converting it, also they moved Business Services Center to help convention groups when they're in here, if they need extra coffee, so they need post-it notes, or pencils, or whatever they might need, we've been converting it for that. Also niche marketing, we've identified seven major niches, like outdoors, or sports, things like that, but then there are over 67 niches under those. And what are our targets? What are we trying to get at, and how are we trying to bring those people in here? Now, how do we do all this thing? We listen. As this statement says, a lot of people don't listen. They are waiting to, thinking about how they're going to reply rather than absorbing what they're hearing. We try to absorb what we're hearing, and hear what these people are saying rather than saying, aren't we wonderful? Let me tell you how we can do it, and we got to, what we want to say may not be what they want to hear. And we have to make sure we hear what they're saying, so then we can host the people appropriately, whether it's a family that's coming down the road, and they need road information, that's basically what they need, or it's a convention group that needs assistance, we need a rent, so we call it a lot. As we said at the beginning, we want people to be drawn to us, we want to be that place where they're just the most comfortable. Most people are most comfortable, however, for this region, we are not, because we have an ad campaign in Panhandle called, let's go to town. And we know that our friends that are living in farms and ranches in the Texas Panhandle, they had tomorrow, is talking to the kids, saying, you know something, we get the chores done this week, we get everything going, let's go to town this weekend. And let's go to town means Amarillo. So we need to make sure we're prepared to tell them everything they can do, so they can come here, spend some money, obviously, hopefully make the value of businesses more, which makes the property tax higher, which goes directly into your pocket, so that's going to, that's going to help the place. The, this is an example of one of our ads, we, we buy a lot of ads to just stand out. We, we have some unique ads, and I could give you all sorts of them, but we want people to know, I mean, the number one reason you advertise is so somebody notices what you're saying. You know, if they never notice your ad, then there's a waste of money. They notice our ads, so that's one example. We got them specifically for sports, the arts, conventions, all of these areas. I'll give you guys help. Actually, this was a great example with the training, and you were all pointing out the fact that, gosh, when they're training here, they're not spending anybody on travel. Encourage this, encourage every department, if they come, because you have to approve the travel voucher, you approve the cost, encourage them, please, don't tell them not to do it, because we want, you know, unless it's a big, really big, but don't tell them not to travel, but encourage them that, okay, if you're going to travel to Connecticut, to go to training, is that something that could be held here? If you're going to Austin, if you're going to Dallas, if you're going wherever they're going, encourage them to say, gosh, is that something we could bring here, and if they're not sure, call us. Haven't called, haven't called us, and that's what we're here for, to help bring that money back into town, so we can, we can save that for all of us. The, this is our group, and we've got, I think, nine full-time and about four part-time people, but we're all here just to serve you and to serve the tourists, and just help any way we can to improve this economy and just, just share, you know, and I grew up in Fargo, North Dakota, and in the upper Midwest and most of the Midwest, bragging is wrong. In Texas, it's a hurt form, okay? And, and basically, I'm a licensed braver, you know, I'm a professional braver, that's what the job is, and that's what we're here to do, and we need your help in doing that, whether it's things that are specific county things, things in your own private businesses, if you remember the diploma, the PTA, whatever, the groups we can bring in, that's what we do, and it just improves the whole area. I appreciate your time this morning, so we can explain a little bit about what we do and why we do it, and how we're all in departments in this industry.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Super job. Thank you.
And one thing that I'll add is, I ran into Dan last week, and he said, we'll be visiting the commission shortly, we're certainly hearing that the Corps really wants that communication stream back to the county, and what does that look like for the big picture in the city and county being interrelated? So I appreciate you taking that as a concerted charge of what that means to you and your respective sphere of influence, and bringing that back to the county, so that we are, are truly kind of hearing these things that are happening and potential opportunities to help us all grow.
Well, I appreciate that, Commissioner, I mean, you know how, and you've been through a lot of hows, you don't always get whys, and, and it's part of our job, whether in front of you like this or privately, if you want to just go and say, well, we'd be glad to share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10, Potter County Projects, here to report on various Potter County projects and thinking the action necessary. Mr. Head?
Morning.
Morning, sir.
The document, report that you have before you, all the items that were in bold, those are the changes from the previous report. The first item is on page one, County Court House Preservation Page, three items, start with that. Warranty items, the next page will reflect what I'm fixing to say. Out of the warranty claims, one of the largest claims we have probably in excess of $40,000. I was contacted last week by a contractor, he stated that he would be here willing to visit with me tomorrow to try to get this project going. This is on all the millwork in the cornroom, Julie's area, and all the rest of the building.
Thank you. Do you have anything else? Go ahead, Matt.
That's the line share of our objection.
Yep.
That our intention with journeyman, I'll just say that, so it'd be really nice to get that grabbed.
So when responsible, but now this contractor had mentioned to me that he went to Mike White, Vice President, Journeyman Construction, Mike White told him to get the work done. On your third page. On your third page, the Santa Fe Elevator Project, the ship replacements, received notification that the parks are looking to be on site this coming Friday. They had to completely remake these gears and these shits and chaff. And anticipated starts will be the week of July the twenty-first. We estimate around a week to get that done. We'll bring in and do our state inspections after that, since it's been shut down for quite some time. Hopefully get back in operation. The Santa Fe Modernization Project, Phase One, we're about twenty percent. We got our first owner consultant meeting on June the ninth. This past week, I was gone, and the consultants, they've all been working together, I've been seeing them, been sharing emails back and forth. So hopefully this week, we'll start compiling all that information. Out of the Phase One, their biggest task is to have me estimate costs by July the twenty-fifth in order to present to you on commissioners for that project. Then the next phase, hopefully will kick off during October, actual initiation of the The May twenty-third hail damage, the emergency projects there, Items Two through Five, I'm currently just now receiving proposals on them. I'll be reviewing them to go through, and once these are completed, we're through with the Santa Fe project. Your next page. On the hail damage, non-emergency projects, Items One through Six, we are awaiting the proposals there due in about this week. David and I will have a meeting with some of the contractors this week to go over it in order to review all the costs, in order to present it to the commissioners for approval of that. Item Seven, the extension building flooding, basically, we've already approved that, we're just waiting on them to provide the samples of the new carpet. I'll visit with them, pardon me, leaving, and I'm not for sure David will think that they will do that. Volunteer Fire Station, Item Number One, we are, I believe that will take place next week, if I'm not mistaken, according to our engineering, the ETJ plat surveys are in order. Bill Thompson Israel is the one that we're using, hopefully get them out there to plat everything out. The site topographic survey is pending. Once we receive the ETJ plat survey, then I will report all documents on the table and give them to go ahead there. Grocery list, we have currently revised this, this right here will be for your new site, so the old one you can throw away. Retro Commissioning Project, we have still not.
We'll get a copy of that grocery list revised.
And please understand, when I give you the grocery list, that'll fluctuate throughout the projects and go back and forth. Still have not heard anything back from Excel. I'll make contact with them this week on the retro commissioning and the standard of programs for rebates. District Courts Building, the security project that I was asked to get involved in, I have received the cost of Phase One for the property site lighting. Phase Two, the security cameras, I've received cost from it as well. Phase Three, I've received cost, and the contractor is currently working on the design and the layout of that. I was going to tell you right now, after visiting with Judge Flare here, through my budget meeting with them, this right here was one of the items placed on the project list to be presented to you at that time. Bushland Fire Station, the emergency project on the subject system has been completed. My pad, I drove by there the other day, and everything looked a bit, yes.
Any questions or discussion? Same then, appreciate that report. Item number twelve, formal proposal, number ten seventy-six dash thirteen, to consider an act upon not awarding formal proposal, ten seventy-six thirteen H, case, excuse me, case management software. Do any of the submitted responses?
I'm sure you skipped it a gentleman.
Oh, yes. Scratch number twelve for a minute, we'll back up to number eleven. Formal bid, ten ninety-one dash fourteen, to consider an act upon awarding formal bid, number ten ninety-one dash fourteen, Detention Center Laundry Services Supplies, to Mayfield Paper Company, it's the lowest responsive bid.
This was a, it's not an annual bid, we do it every three years just because of the industry and what they like, because they're putting in an investment of putting pumps in our industrial laundry system that feed into our washing machines. And so this is a bid for them putting those pumps and to supply the, you know, the detergent and bleach and everything for those laundry services that our inmates actually run. It's not, they're not running the service, they're just providing the supplies for them to do it. And so we're recommending to award the lowest bid. We do test those detergents, we get samples of the bid, and we took those out to the detention center, and both companies passed their test, and so we're recommending the lowest bid.
Question on that issue, or the sheet that we received, is the figure under price per ounce for Mayfield, could that be a point zero six? Probably, I'm sure. I wouldn't figure out, right? I don't think. Do I have a motion?
Exactly.
It's been moved, David. It's been moved.
Seconded in discussion.
It's been moved, it's seconded that we award the formal bid, number ten ninety-one fourteen, where laundry supplies at the detention center for Mayfield Paper Company.
Just a quick question, David, is this a new vendor that we're working with?
No, Mayfield has been on some other things throughout, and they've had our other janitorial supplies throughout the years, so now they're a local, environmental company.
Okay. That's the only question I have, thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion? Same then, we'll see to vote, all in favor, figure five, raise your hand. Close, same sign, pass four to zero. Now, number twelve. Formal proposal for number ten seventy-six thirteen, to consider an act upon not awarding the formal proposal, ten seventy-six thirteen, case management software. Any of the submitted responses?
I tried to put a pretty detailed synopsis of the situation as it occurred, leading up to this bid. I'll kind of go over the high points, and if you have any questions, you can ask me or anyone else in the committee that might be here. October fourteenth of last year, you as a commission approved us going out for proposals for a county-led case management system. We sent that out, Jason prepared that, I think he took two or three months, put together a really comprehensive proposal. That went out, each vendor had around a month, a month and a half to respond to that proposal, and we received responses. I will say, we had over a hundred vendors look at that proposal, I could track that with the business that we used. We had roughly, I think I said, forty-five vendors that actually downloaded a copy of that proposal, and in the end, we only received five responses whenever that closed. Of those five responses, three of those were non-responsive, and we had to throw them out immediately. And I could get into that later if you have more questions, but we considered three of those non-responsive, and so we really only had two true vendors to evaluate and to look at. We called those vendors in, we did evaluations, and we ranked them one and two. The first vendor that we got the highest evaluation, we entered in negotiations, basically, and that had been almost a four-month process from when we decided to start negotiations until right before the Fourth of July holiday. We received notice that that company fired all its employees and was no longer going to offer case management system. So actually, we're quite lucky because we haven't signed any contract. Because of that, there's only one other company left to evaluate, and they know that there's no competition under this proposal process. We're recommending to not award this proposal. I think the group will kind of get back together and come up with strategy to go forward. But that's our recommendation on this proposal, to close it out, not award it to any of the responses that we received.
Usually, Pete driving is a bad thing, but this time it's good. Any, do we want, do we need to take action?
Yes, I'd like action.
Well, one thing that I might say before we get a motion on the table is that the Eldat Committee is kind of been the outlet of where this conversation has started, and then the subcommittee, correct me if I'm wrong, David, is, the subcommittee that you're talking about is really a branch of that Eldat comprehensive group, because it certainly is a large group that kind of vets out what technology might look like for the county. Commissioner Church and I both sit on that in preparation for court. We were briefed on what would be presented to the Corps, and certainly, it goes without saying that certainly we would applaud all the employees that were part of that process, because it was a difficult process, and I know there were certainly a lot of good movement, discussions in terms of good movement, what that might look like. But I would agree that it really gives us a good pause of what it might look like for the county. We expect this to be a very significant expenditure, so it goes without saying that the amount of work we knew going in, I certainly, I know certainly this is not the outcome that we were expecting, so I didn't want it to go without saying appreciation to everybody that participated in that.
Do we have a motion to? The motion would be to not award bid for case management software. We have seconded. We moved, it's seconded that we not award a contract for case management software. All those in favor, signal five, raise your hand. All those close, same sign, pass as four as you will. Thank you, Chris. Item thirteen, equipment repair replacement. To consider an act upon purchasing of following equipment, that it will be replacing obsolete equipment that can no longer be serviced or repaired. A, is a folder inserter for the district clerk from Tesco's office machines in the amount of eight thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. This will be replacing Potter County number sixteen zero eighty-one. B, a high-speed scanner for the district clerk from Tesco's office machines in the amount of six thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars. This will be replacing Potter County number seventeen two sixty-six.
I need to warn you, I never want to ask for replacement equipment, and not in budgets, cycle. But at this point, we have both our scanner and our folder being irreplaceable. Our scanner, we got it in two thousand three, and it costs five thousand dollars a ton. We got a letter from the company in June saying that this folder was going to be discontinued, would not be serviceable after September first. Since we send out at least six hundred summits for jury service every day, three thousand each Monday, we didn't want to be without a folder, so that's.
And that was purchased in two thousand three?
Two thousand three. And then the scanner is one that I brought last budget time, and we said, we'll just wait and see if it lasts, and it really hasn't lasted. I've got a repair log, it's over ten pages long, and finally it's gotten to the point that the tear saw, the paper's been scanned in, and phones to talk over, or just won't pull them at all, and so it is, we bought it in two thousand six, and at that time it cost thirteen thousand, but it had such good technology improvements, so it would now have to be.
Sixty-four ninety.
Caroline, are you proposing that the budget dollars come from?
Repair and replacement.
Of your accounts?
General account, yes. General county repair and replacement accounts.
We can be carried for guidance. It does not fall under Caroline's budget. When I hear repair and replace, I'm thinking of under your line items of the budget.
No, this is split between the accounts of the general, the district clerk, and there is picking up houses.
And are both of these still in working condition in terms of they're operating for a mail-out today on a Monday?
The scanner, the folder cam, the scanner, it doesn't work.
And then, what are, let me make sure that I'm reading this correctly, so one of these is a, the folder is a lease agreement, or you marked that off, and we're going to purchase it outright? So there is an option to potentially lease that equipment? And I was talking to David, we can purchase it.
Yeah, if we're going to keep it for ten or fifteen years, like we did the other one, and if you multiply that hundred and eighty-three out, including possible lease agreements, it's a lot more if you lease it than if you just purchase it. So that was my recommendation of wanting to purchase it. What's the pros and cons of leasing it versus purchasing it out, like, always of serviceability and lack of real estate versus actually selling it bad? I mean, you know, I'm copiers and, you know, lease them because that's such a big program, but individual pieces of equipment like this, since we're not getting more than one, I don't know if there's any, there's any advantage of leasing. I would have to do some research to say for sure, but I couldn't tell you advantages of this spread. Other than if we kept it for ten years, it costs more. Yeah, it would cost more to lease if we kept it for ten years versus, you know, if we wanted a new machine every five years, the lease is probably the way to go. I would think, kind of like a car, a life term, if you're going to keep it and service it and plug it in.
The typical life cycle of that type of equipment, we.
I think it's on passive life cycle.
I mean, a couple of women.
Proposed.
You know, I don't, I'm not. It's expected to do heavy, heavy work. I don't think it's as good. I could estimate the life cycle.
I've done, I could bring that back up next time, but you know, the last one we bought in two thousand two, actually, so it's been, it's been twelve years. I would hope to get at least that out this way. Tesco's is selling it to us, and they'll be the ones servicing it sometime in the
Okay, do we want to address each one individually, or do we have a motion for?
If there's any questions specifically you want to, I'll just send both of them.
Judge move to approve the purchase of both the folder and the high-speed scanner, is that right?
Judge, can I get you to include a bunch of tracks from?
Is there a second to that motion? We moved and seconded that we approve the purchase of a folder inserter and a high-speed scanner, both for the district clerk's office, purchased from Tesco's office machines. The funds would come from the repair and maintenance, and be transferred into district ourselves, budget. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal five, raise your hand. Close, close, same signs, four, zero, passes. Thank you. Item fourteen, Bushland release of road dedication. This is a portion of Wells Street. To consider an act upon releasing the road dedication for a portion of an undeveloped road in Bushland.
The, the old.
Tell us your name.
Brian.
Who you are?
Brian Murray Coop.
It's Sunray Coop.
We acquired Bushland last year through a merger, and the old scale house, as it is today, is needed, demolished and rebuilt. With equipment getting bigger and bigger and bigger every year, the old scale house is built for bobtail trucks, not semis. So they cannot make the turn to go around the elevator and come back in. They're running into the side walls and everything else. So our proposal is to build the new scale house on the other side of the county road that runs east and west, and there's a street called Wells Street that runs north and south. that runs east and west and there's a street called Wells Street that runs north and south there. We would like to take over that street, put our scale on that street and the building off to the side because as it is, when trucks move, come through there to exit, they have to make a loop to come back into the elevator. If you put it any further west, it's going to get a little more congested, so. And I believe that's a, that's a, I don't know if anybody really takes care of that particular road, but I don't know. Not a lot of.
Roger, do you have anything?
No, not really. The only thing that's been used for in the last twenty years or so, we put gravel on it to seal coat town boost, but we'll move it some, gravel someplace else.
We would offer to, you could pilot any place on our property there that.
Okay.
There's no problem.
Something like that, we'll be all right.
That's one of those deep roads out in Bushland that we're here on the platform we're going to go up and so it's not, it's not strictly speaking a county road, so.
I went down and looked at that road and your property is on each side of it and I don't see a problem with that.
I would like to add to this too also, and I don't know if there's anything that can be done, but the road that runs east and west, there is a home on the end, on the very end of that street, there is one home. But what we've seen since I've been down there is there's some safety issues with that street. Traffic flows through there, guys tend to use that as a shortcut probably more so than anything. They're going up and down that street at a fairly good clip. Safety issues, us coming out of the barns and I have seen one accident out there where a car backed out of the Mercantile right onto that county road and it was a fender bender.
So cars are going east and west along that drive?
Yes, yes.
You're talking about twenty eighth, I think?
I believe it is, I believe it is.
That's the one in front of the Mercantile?
Yes, to the south. We do have a lot of people now, but we put the fueling center in there, walking across that road and it's, to me it's a safety issue, but I mean, and I know it's a county road and I know it's, it's a paved county road, but.
So what does that, does that raise any type of flag, Dave, or is it a liability?
I don't know liability, but I have gotten kind of a heads up from Mr. Vanover who I've been working with over, working with you guys, that you might be interested also in asking for that road to close off. That's an actual county road, so it's going to be a little tougher to abandon it because other people use it then, so. I don't, I mean, I don't know, I mean, you probably could, but it's going to be more difficult, there's more process to go through to close that road and.
Now, there is access to the west, onto the access road along here for anybody that lives on the backside and there is another road that runs directly to the north of the Mercantile that runs east and west and I don't know, like I said, to me it's, something's going to happen there one of these days.
So, so would it, who was to put some type of sign, a warning or anything of that nature?
I'd like to know more about it if it's possible, but again, this whole situation is going to make you do something, you actually make plausible trouble if not.
That area is so congested and I don't, I don't know what the answer would be, I mean, you put up signs, but they're going to, I don't know.
Very congested. Well, that's, it's interesting to talk about this, that particular road, but it's not an urgent road.
Yeah, thanks for talking to us.
So let's, let's do that, just think about it, you come up with some proposals?
Yeah, and I don't want to take any more of your time, but leaving you at this, that if, if that did happen in the future, the, the Bushland, Mercantile, Sunray Coop would maintain slash still remove all of that area, so.
Okay, do we have a motion? I will move to release the road dedication for a portion of the undeveloped road on Wells.
Okay, may I add something? Since he said we could use his property to put our gravel, can that be recognized at this time or what?
I think that's, we can't be separate, Roger. We need to kind of bring something in, I think, I would think, and that's not all.
Okay.
We can draw some.
We can write it.
Yeah.
We have a second?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is to. Want to wait?
Release that.
Okay, she asked you to wait, or asked to wait?
Right.
You might want to go for a second. We'll take a short recess for a couple minutes until. All right, Commissioner, there is a motion and second on the floor to release that portion of Wells Street in Bushland. And so if there's not any further discussion, we'll vote on the motion.
In that motion, just to confirm, does that include authorizing the judge to sign the dedication? Okay.
All those in favor of the motion, signal five, raise your hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Pricey Fairgrounds Property Insurance Coverage to hear a report on the status of property insurance claims on certain buildings on fairgrounds and to take any action necessary.
I would go to pass that, is that correct?
Yes. It'll be tabled till next time. All right, we have three executive session items.
Part of this, Commissioner, if I can, I'd like to do, in fact, you know, certainly directing your guidance, I do have a presentation that I would like to display and open for and then followed by any potential discussions in the executive session.
Sure, you can sure do that and I think that's probably a wise idea because I do have, on item number sixteen, I do have some level of discomfort with having that always an executive session. I mean, I think that we're getting active offer from someone or to some company for an development to have a closed session and, and I've noted also that you can always, or never have to have an executive session unless it's a confidential. And you can always choose to talk about an open session and not having an executive session too, so it's, in short, it's fine to have a presentation.
Okay, for sure, with that guidance, I would like to use that agenda item and really sixteen and eighteen kind of coexist, but I would like to use the agenda item for presentation between moment four and then what that might look like from a contracts perspective as well as with the executive session. Can I?
So what are we on?
I think sixteen, sure. And would you mind moving on to PowerPoint? Okay. Okay, perfect. Fairly unusing through vice here, so. Part of what I wanted to present back to the court, this is a direct derivative of participation on the local government corporation. So as we know, the entity and the city have now kind of partnered with the county and offered an ex officio seat. I was selected on behalf of the court to fill that seat. So the last couple of weeks I've been briefed in terms of any potential discussions, where we are today and really the historical piece of it. And so part of what I feel like my role is, is that continued proactive communication back to this court and what that might look like for us in Potter County. The immediate discussion would be on the potential for a parking garage that the city is planning on building and the local government corporation is really the entity or the body that does the contract negotiations for the city. And so based on the fact that the parking garage is going up, whether the county is participating or not, what I'd like to propose to the court is a potential opportunity to participate. The location is immediately adjacent to the district court's building. We know based on our existing strategic planning discussions is that we have some parking deficiencies and I say that really kind of candidly because that's not new information to anybody that's feeling and written that every single day. So in preparation for the discussion today, what I wanted to do was present to the court a really high-level view of the studies that Architectsus has done to get us to where we are today from a strategic planning perspective. And so this conversation is really not what we see our buildings looking like two to five years from now, it's more of a parking needs in particular because there is an immediate opportunity should we choose to take it. I did confirm with Larry Ursick in preparation for this meeting, just to make sure my favors were correct and I was pulling from the proposals correctly. So this first one is just a high-level visual image of what the parking spots look like today, so you'll notice the actual image is the district court's building. There are a hundred and eleven parking stalls that reside on there today. Immediately across the street is our sheriff's admin with a hundred and nine stalls and forty of those really in the gated area. I don't really consider those public use because they are gated and that's typically where our fleet, our Potter County fleet of vehicles resides. You'll notice for the courthouse itself, it's not included in the study in terms of any real tangible parking stalls. We know there is parking options around the courthouse, but it really is on the outer layer, there is not an actual stall, it's just kind of parking along the street. So two hundred and sixty are the existing parking stalls that we have today. This is part of the feasibility study and what they were looking at is benchmarks in terms of square footage, so you'll notice kind of in the middle of that is the benchmark parking ratio, program ratio, twenty-twelve when the study was done, of what the gross square foot was, twenty-fifteen, twenty-thirty-five, should we continue to grow. Now, that's, that study was taken off square footage, so part of that is assuming the building is changing and that square footage is changing or the sheer volume I would imagine and what might be going in there. So you'll see those deficiencies, parking deficiencies that they were noting at that time as we start to grow. What they also included in that study is assuming that the detention center, which supplies a hundred and fifty-nine spaces, is consolidated and or moved away from where the property is today, that is the potential parking deficit because all of those spots would be gone and what that might look like. So I just wanted to give the court a quick snapshot of where we are today. I know at the district court's building already, some of that construction work has started to occur across the street and the dirt has been turned, so they're feeling the impact of that today with no action from the court. Any questions on that study in particular? The next thing that I wanted to propose or really kind of re-inform the court is, you know, as part of our strategic planning, we've been given lots of different scenarios and lots of different options for what our buildings might look like and you'll see really a couple of different options that were presented to the court. One of those was building a parking garage ourselves, being the county, and for eighty-two cars, that particular analysis was one point six million that was presented to the court. You'll see a very different opinion here in just a second on the next slide and my intent in kind of giving you both thresholds is that you can really see that this has moved and probably will continue to move as we move to really taking a holistic look at our property. A couple of other options that were presented is option one was the surface parking and if the county purchased an actual city block to then start to tackle some of the parking issues and or enhancements. So you'll see the cost there to the left-hand side of that slide at one point one million plus the land plus the demo cost if anything was on that land. Option two is depending on the number of stalls, roughly twenty thousand to twenty-four thousand is what the county might look like. So again, my whole intent is really just to show you the full spectrum of what this county has been given from one million, one point six, one million, all the way up to six to seven million for a future need of our parking demands. And the opportunity as a part of the LGC that I'm hearing is a true city and county partnership if that's a direction that we chose to take and we can certainly bet that on the executive session if there is direction from the court that that is where we would like to proceed, but I think it goes without saying that parking, a parking issue has been, has been ruled in this county, but we do have an existing parking deficit, what that might look like, whether that's something the county wants to take on on their own or truly enter in the future activity and I think it is uniquely located to where our property is, so it really just kind of makes sense from my perspective to start to at least have those conversations and decide if it works for the county or not. And I think that's the end of my presentation, Commissioner, and then we'll fire the executive session.
All right, do we want to suspend our rules and take on number nineteen first? We have item nineteen to consider an act on the following employment items. A, election administration to temporarily increase hours per week through September thirty, twenty fourteen for Cassie Bledsoe, Deputy Clerk, effective six nineteen fourteen. B, road and bridge, the employment of Isaiah Garnes, summer mower, effective six nineteen fourteen. C, road and brays, the termination of Felipe Martinez, Jr., summer mower, effective six two fourteen. Human resources, salary increase for Veronica Vargas, payroll coordinator, effective six one fourteen. Facility maintenance, E, the termination of Michael Ninnan, custodian one, effective seven fifteen fourteen. F, facility maintenance, the employment of Pamela K Porter, custodian one, effective seven sixteen fourteen. And G, facilities maintenance, the employment of Rosemary Chorn, custodian one, effective six, seven sixteen fourteen.
I make a motion that we approve all the employment items as presented.
Certainly. The move is seconded that we approve all the employment items as presented. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, raise your hand. Those both same sign, pass four, zero. We'll also take care of the jail report, we have four hundred and eighty-seven folks in jail, ninety-four female, we have no one housed in children's at this time. Any county insurance issues? With that, we will move back then to executive session, economic development, Amarillo Local Government Corporation, they are basically, we've heard that report, so sixteen is probably out.
Yeah, I would think sixteen was completed in open session, Commissioner, and eighteen for contract negotiations would be the executive session.
Seventeen, executive session, real property, six street property, to hold an executive session that deliberates the purchase, exchange or value of the six street property where deliberations in open meetings would have a detrimental effect on the position of the county in negotiation with a third party pursuant to section five fifty-one dot zero seventy-two Texas Government Code. And if any actions taken will be out here in open court. Eighteen, executive session, contract negotiations with the Amarillo Local Government Corporation to consider whether deliberation in open session would have detrimental effect on negotiation with LGC in regards to the county's participation in the parking garage project. B, if unanimous to hold executive session as authorized by Texas Government Code's section five five one point zero seven two five to deliberate business and financial issues relating to a proposed contract with LGC or if not authorized to deliberate in open session.
Essentially, I'm sorry to interrupt, but essentially this, for this exception, you have to vote right now about whether or not you really need to go into executive session, talk about this contract and that has to be unanimous decision to be able to do that and one of the things we're required to do is you need to get written termination from us that legally speaking, if you want to retire because of the possible detriment to your negotiating position, that's okay, so I've got that for you here and I'll give a copy to the clerk for the record and now you'll have to move.
I guess I'm somewhat lost. Well. Well...
I think that's reasonable to agree that we have identified that item as executive session. And it's already known throughout legal to apply that if we can with executive session.
Well...
My question is, is open session, why do we need to manage on the code? If, if I, it was further to legal that prior to submitting this on the agenda, that could be an exception.
That's what the statute requires. This is a fairly new exception, and that's what the legislature requires. Because they don't want us to be able to do anything in LGC. And so, uh, so you have to, I mean, unlike, you're, you're correct. I mean, by putting it on ordinarily, if it's, it's the exception, you put it on the agenda and then you, you, you know, if you want to talk about it in open session, you don't have to, but you did, can go to, uh, executive session. But for this contract negotiation process, for some reason, the legislature said we wanted, we, we would rather have this discussed in open session. The Commissioners' Court and their legal advisor both feel like it is necessary to talk about this in private so that you don't miss out, don't affect the contract negotiations. We'll let you do it. That's all gotta be on record.
Prior, and, and prior to the vote, I'm, I'm asking your legal advisor, is your, your recommendation that we retire to executive session to discuss the position of the contract?
Yeah.
As long as there's no formal action taken.
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely. All the other rules apply. You can't put any formal action there, but I mean, you need to, uh, but you can discuss it and then come out and say that.
Okay, I don't think we add to a recommendation.
I'm not sure what the motion needs to say, but I'll make that motion.
The motion, the motion needs to say that, that we approve, we charge executive session because of the contract negotiation would be adverse to effect, and we don't have to have an open session. Basically, we'll repeat, repeat the language in the statute.
So move.
Can we just turn to outdoor?
The movement is seconded that we, uh, follow the statute in regards to this, uh, going into executive session on the issue of discussing a contract. And seconded, is there any further discussion on the motion? Say none, we'll, uh, vote all in favor. Raise your hand.
That was good because it had to be unanimous.
Yes.
Or to nothing. So we will go into executive session. Um, we'll be back here in open session. It is three thirty-three at this time.
Ten thirty, ten thirty.
Ten thirty-three. What did I say, three?
Three thirty.
Seems like it. Ten thirty-three. We'll recess to, uh, executive session. Open session. Uh, item number seventeen, number sixteen was the report that we heard basically when we were all in here. Number seventeen, the executive session on real property, uh, no action, uh, taken. Will be taken at this time. Number eighteen, executive session, contract negotiation, Amarillo Local Government, uh, Corporation. Uh, there will be some, um, discussion with the city as to, uh, how some, um, cooperation or joint venture might be of benefit. There'll be no, no official action until there is a contract or something presented to the, to the court. Is there anything else you need to add on that?
I don't.
Okay. Item number twenty-three, agenda items, to receive agenda items for the next Commissioners' Court. Same unhappy saying as I do, uh, speaking back. Yes.
We could originally plan to have our budget during, uh, budget workshops beginning after our next Commissioners' Court meeting on July twenty-eighth. But there have been several departments that have had issues come up in the, in the week of August eleventh, or, or, or any...
That's a regular court session on, uh, on November, correct?
Yes, and then we would probably need to set that Tuesday and Wednesday as well.
Oh, oh, budget workshops, that's fine. Um, it would be, I have a comment on that. It would be my suggestion that at least one of those heated days, I would consider evening session, uh, just for the, uh, for the number of...
Which we did last year and was...
Well, yeah, that was when we had the, the, uh, public...
The public meeting.
Right, that's just workshop.
Just a workshop.
Right. That would be, I mean, just to open that for the public. I can personally, uh, have the two possible sessions.
Generally, the workshops are with the department heads. That's the most important thing at that time, of when you can get to the point where we have open. Open, you mean, uh, public meetings? Well, they're all public meetings, but...
You would be required to have one public budget hearing with the public to address, and then if our tax rate increases above the effective, you'd be required to have two public meetings for, for the tax increase.
And one of those two is when we would have in the evening.
Last year was the one we had in the evening, which was widely attended.
That would be fine.
And also the location, Karen?
Correct. Um, we've also been requested by you to see if we can move the meeting to the auditorium instead of the building. The, the parties have more room to spread out.
Have tables to work on?
One thing that I, is the audio, if there's not good on...
No. But the audio for the, for the current session of the department is with the working group is good enough, am I correct? Uh, Mike, was that not suitable or...
Julie's one that had the issue on picking things up.
It's not that great. I mean, even with what we have, this little recorder, it's a digital recorder, but it, it is hard to pick up stuff.
Okay, for lack of a better notation, yeah, I agree that we need to probably expand and look outside of this venue to have more, um, ability and accessibility for, for working groups. And here, is there another place we could look at?
We have the sixth floor training room up here, the west side of the building.
What kind of audio would we get up there?
Are we have to look at it?
No.
I think we need to consider that as always.
I mean, you can make it, but you're gonna have to be diligent and make the people...
Speak into the microphone.
Speak into the microphone. State who they are, because that's where we, I mean, there's just a lot of, even as loud as you can turn it up, and even after we've transferred it over to our computer, sometimes it's just, you know, if we have to go back and listen to something or if anybody's wanting a copy of it, it's, uh, it's not good audio.
Can't be looking into that and see if it's, uh, suitable audio, acoustics, uh...
Santa Fe's gonna be busy, isn't it? Because of what y'all were over there. Hey, Julie's right. When y'all held Commissioners' Court over there and people speaking, and speak to the microphone, you know, that was our biggest issue when we were in the audience, we could not hear. Uh, but I think your issue's on the recording side. I have to make sure you can record when people are speaking.
Well, as long as we know we're gonna move it to the week of the eleventh, we could actually decide where it's gonna be next, next meeting. Then we'd have the full one here as well.
We could work with Julie's office, I reckon, uh, to see what needs to be done, the odds for him, get, uh, IT involved, see what we can do up there.
Uh, one thing that I know that Jason, if, if the Santa Fe building is used, the location, um, he did indicate that we could have similar monitors so that we could visually see it. I know part of the challenge was that we were all kind of watching it on the, um, just the wall, the white wall. So that they could at least get the monitor so everybody could follow along for what that's like.
So Karen, we could work with you on setting that toward making it available to the public.
Well, and Jason and I did go up to the audience board last week to look at it, and he, since we will have the monitors, he suggested that we set it up basically like this where the Commissioners' Court is facing the audience. And we'll still project the, the audience to see that y'all will have the monitors, and that may help that, that those residents who, who fix it still want to address that issue.
I mean, we don't have, I just wanted to let you guys know that that's, that's the issues that are over there, so if y'all want to do that.
You could get beyond the issue that...
So just to be sure everybody understands, the budget workshops will be out Monday the eleventh, Tuesday the twelfth, Wednesday the thirteenth, and if we need to, there, or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and if we need to Thursday. Okay. All right. Excuse me. Where's it gonna be?
Yes.
We don't know yet.
Be determined.
To be determined at our next meeting. Now, there's, uh, is there anything else anybody wants to bring up? This is a time when it's, uh, it's open to the public to make a statement if there's anything that needs to be brought before the court. Say none. We shall adjourn at eleven fifteen.